All right, ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. We're going to start in the next few minutes. Before we get to the, well, first I need to move for us to come back from executive session. Moved by Moreno, second myself, all in favor? Five yays, no nays. We are back in from executive session. Before we get started with our second line presentation, Mr. Green has a special order.
Third order of business, presentation, board of directors, NAACP, ACTO New Orleans, James A. Gray Chair, Julia B. Battle, PhD, co-chair, Lynette Bates, Director of Education, and Secretary Edith Jones, Director of Development and Treasurer, Ernest Battle, EDD, videographer and content creator. Recognizing the recent winners and more than 20 volunteers from the New Orleans area who earned over 20 medals in 116 NAACP National Convention ACTO Awards. Each year, high school students across the country embark on a journey to sharpen their skills through the Afro-Academic Cultural, Technological, and Scientific Olympic ACTO. From visual arts to business to performing and culinary arts, students work with community-based mentors and volunteers to develop a year-long project and performances to showcase their talents and dedication.
I think that that description summed it up very well. I'm so honored to have an opportunity to recognize those who are at the table, but the young people of our city of New Orleans who participate in the NAACP ACTO competition. It reminds me each year when I go to the performance and also when I track what has happened, I've gone to the national convention once, I'm reminded of the great talent that we have amongst the youth in our city of New Orleans. And no more, no better program that they reflect their talents in other than the NAACP ACTO program. I'm going to introduce Councilman James Gray, who can introduce who's at the table with you. Councilman James Gray is a former city councilman. He's a lawyer, but he's also very committed to our youth. He's done a lot of work in the area of certainly track and field, but other endeavors. So I want to thank everybody at the table. I'm going to let you start, James, and introduce who's at the table with you. But as we make this presentation, I have these folders and certificates for young people. I want everybody to know and I want you to remember the name ACTO, that when you have an opportunity to attend any performance where the youth of ACTO are involved, you will see how much talent we have in our city and how many great endeavors our youth are involved with. Councilman James Gray.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank the entire council. And first of all, let everyone know that much of this would not have happened, except that the entire council, I think each of you gave us some help in getting the kids to the nationals. This year was in Charlotte, North Carolina. ACTO stands for African-American Culture, Technical, and Scientific Olympics. And I guess I should quickly add, we welcome and have had kids who were not African-Americans, but any kid who comes and competes is available to compete. I think over the last four years where we've really got this thing going, I think it's fair to say New Orleans has done better over that four-year period than any other city in the United States of America. In 2023, we were the number one city in the United States of America. 2024, we were number two. We didn't, we weren't quite there this year, but we had great kids. Our kids, we probably started with over 200 kids who participated at some level. We ended up with a local competition producing 19 kids. And we went to the national where they met hundreds, I guess it's fair to say, over 1,000 kids from all over the nation competed and did very well. At the table with me, starting to my immediate right is, and everyone at this table, it wouldn't work without them. I'm labeled as the chairman and Julia Battle is labeled as the co-chair. We are co-chairs. But I think each person I'm going to introduce to you and a lot of other people in the community make this work. Immediately to my right is Ms. Lynette Bates, who is a... who is an overwhelmingly important part of this operation that we have with the kids of this city. She'll tell you who she is perhaps and what she does. Then I have, everyone knows Ms. Edith Jones, next to Ms. Bates. And she is our primary fundraiser, I think it's fair to say. With all these talented kids, we need to have pictures to prove that they are talented. So we have a Ph.D. running around taking pictures, Dr. Battle, the first Dr. Battle. And the real champion of this whole thing is the second Dr. Battle, Dr. Julia Battle, who if there was a fair world, we wouldn't be listed as co-chairs. She would be listed as the person who makes this whole thing work, Julia Battle at the end. I'll let each one of them quickly say hello to you. And Ms. Battle is probably going to make a general presentation. Ms. Bates?
Hi, on behalf of EXO, we'd like to thank you each for your investment in our children. Through your social, cultural and financial support, you've opened doors for our students to be successful and to represent New Orleans in a grand fashion. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'd like to add my thanks to you as well. We could not do this without you, without the funds that you provide to our program. And I just have to give you one little tidbit, and that is for the past three years, we have had a culinary competition. Each year, we have ranked one or two nationally. This past year, we had the largest national competition with nine young people competing in culinary, and we came home with the silver this year. We had silver last year and gold the year before. So please know that culinary is leading the charge at the national EXO. Thank you so much.
I too want to thank the council and in particular on a day like this for making time to take a moment to focus on your young people. And for me as a photographer or whatever I am, it's just an honor really and truly to capture some of the greatness of the young people in this community. And it never gets old. And so I feel humbled and honored to be the guy behind the cell phone or the camera or on the floor or wherever I have to go to get that shot to really focus on the greatness of the young people, many of whom are here today.
Good afternoon, everyone. We are indeed grateful to all of you. At risk of saying it too much, we can't say it enough. This makes a difference for young people without whom this opportunity would have happened may not ever get to achieve their goals. And you're making a difference. You are doing something. And so we are very, very, very grateful to you and so are the young people and their parents here in the audience. I wish we had time for you to hear them all perform. They are extraordinary. Let me tell you just a little bit about EXO. We are empowerment through training and self-actualization. Our mentorship program is comprehensive. So we serve the arts, we serve writing and the humanities, we serve culinary, we serve STEM. And we have had students represent the great city of New Orleans in almost every area, in 28 of 33 competition areas. Our program offers professional training in all of those areas. It offers civic awareness in working with the community and helping our students see the importance of being a good citizen and service to the community. And we keep data. We track our students from when they start with us all the way through college to see if there is indeed a correlation between what we do and their success. Our benefits include teamwork and leadership, mentorship and support, lots of community engagement, and as Mr. Gray said, networking at the national level. We had 88 units at EXO National this year. And of those 88 units, our students medaled in poetry performance and in culinary. But every one of our students is a winner and a national finalist. And, you know, it's a debate as to whether we're number one in the nation, but I will tell you this, the second line was incorporated into the national show. So our children taught the rest of the young people and adults as we came in with our entrance and our banners and our umbrellas. In the show, they incorporated our culture. So they are indeed culture bearers for this city in many, many, many ways. We've engaged over 600 students in the past four years. We have had 70 children go to national because of support like yours. And we have had 20 medalists, 20 at the national level. And those students have represented 25 different areas. So EXO is making a difference because of people like you. We have brought programs from our award show to share with you so you can see our students and their names. We have over 30 mentors at this point. We give them a little stipend, but they volunteer, professionals in their field, outstanding in their fields. So we'd like to say thank you. We'd like to say how proud we are of our students and our group. And that's all I have to say.
Are there any students and parents here? Would you stand?
Oh, yes. We need our students and parents to stand.
And I just want to say, this is how New Orleans presents itself at national. We have, we had 68 people to travel to national this year to support our students. So we always show up and show out and represent well.
And incidentally, your money didn't pay for anyone but the kids. The parents went on their own ticket.
Let me tell you, James, I'm over that with the media. If it paid for some of you all, just as long as you tell us what it was for. That's all. At the end of the day, it's about getting the job done. Councilmember Harris, would you wish to comment?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Green. Every year I look forward to this presentation to understand and learn more about EXO and see the young people and their parents who support all of you, especially as our federal and state government are attacking learning in the humanities. When you talk about poetry and arts and the humanities and making sure that they have an outlet for that, the young people, I think it's just really amazing. And to have the exposure to other cities and to expose other cities to New Orleans is just really fantastic. So again, every year I look forward to this. I look forward to seeing the young people who have participated. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you to the young people and their parents and all of the mentors who support them.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Moreno.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. These are the type of partnerships that are so important, you know, between amazing organizations and the city council so that, you know, we can make sure that we are really supporting our youth. And this is a perfect example of this. Every year you all come before us and I feel like every year, it's much as you've been growing, you still continue to grow. And so congratulations to all the students, all the young people who are with us today who received the EXO awards and of course the parents, congratulations as well. And keep doing what you're doing. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moreno. Councilmember Morel.
Thank you. Not to the blabber the point, we as a city are so proud of the work that our kids have done with EXO. We are so proud of you as guys as an organization in getting these kids up to where they need to be to actually compete. And I think it's something that we undervalue, especially in our community, that these kind of competitions, breeding this level of competition in kids at such a young age, is what will make them successful in the future. Because part of the problem we have generally speaking is that when we're just competing amongst ourselves and we're having little competitions here, we really are setting a ceiling. When you have our kids competing at the national level, they see who they're really competing with, which is everybody in the world. And when you go and you compete at the national level and you succeed, you medal, or you just show up as a finalist at the national level, you know what you're capable of. So thank you so much for all the work y'all do. Thank you, parents, for supporting your kids, and we're really proud of you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morel. Councilmember Thomas.
First off, thank you guys for all the members of EXO with the NAACP and every, all of the parents and kids who are part of this program. I mean, that's what New Orleans do. When, when, excuse me, that's, that's, that's what we do. Whenever we line up, in many cases, we don't appreciate ourselves in terms of our ability and our social and international standing as much as people around the world. The kids who are in the juvenile jail here in New Orleans, they won the Aspen Institute. And they're the kids who are behind bars. So our kids have always excelled. We've always been special because in this town, just the ability to survive makes your senses a lot more keen, makes your understanding a lot broader, and makes your ability to keep because we're the greatest collection of survivors in the history of any place in this world. So I'm not surprised when our kids shine. I'm surprised when we surprised that they did. I'm going to take a moment here, a couple of minutes, because I don't know when I'm going to have it again. So thank y'all. This is the 20th anniversary of Katrina. And I want to thank Councilmember, Attorney, Former Marine, James Gray. Because for those of us who were here every day, and you'll remember, some of us had sores on our bodies for months. I'm watching all of these Katrina tributes, and there are people who don't know about that date, them few days that happened where we had to fight to get over the bridge. Where you, not the attorney or the former council member, the Marine, when we got a call from the water plant in Algiers, they had no supplies, no blankets, no food, no security. There was a body in the middle of the street that had swell up to like it was, there was shooting around there. And that was the only water plant, potentially potable water plant in the region. If that water plant had been lost, Councilman Gray, there would be no water. Malik Rahim was fighting because even though Algiers wasn't underwater, people had abandoned it. Well, you, me, Carlos Temple, Chuck Bernard, your son, we got a call from an employee, Rudy August, who said, man, please, somebody come help us because if not, we're going to have to leave. We don't feel safe here. Spent two days, the Marines spent two days, trucks full of water, trucks full of blankets, trucks full of cots. So I'm watching people with all these Katrina stories, and God bless everybody. But for those of us who was here every day, wasn't looking for no attention, not trying to cash in on this politically, you've never got your due, bruh. Never, and you never asked for it. Thank you, James Gray.
Thank you very, thank you very much, but there, there were a lot of people out here pulling people out the water who never got on television, never got interviewed. When they were talking about young black men doing bad things, no one talked about the young black men going into the water uptown, bringing people to St. Charles Avenue. And there was plenty of that. And you didn't mention my nephew. He was with us too. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, James Gray, for the work that you do and continue to do. Everyone, in deference to time, I'm going to not have the recipients come up here. We're going to go outside for a photo, but I think that you all will understand that the young people and their parents would want to hear their names. So we are recognizing the gold medalist, the national finalist for the proclamations. In culinary arts, gold, Leona Jackson. I want them to hear their names. And what you can do is if you're here, you can stand, but I'm going to go right through. And then we're going to hold that thunderous applause until the end, all right? Poetry performance, gold, Amira Kanate. Dramatics, gold, Matthew Williams. Dance ballet, gold, Kamora Smith. Dance traditional, Imani Mosley. Dance contemporary, Constance Epps. Dance modern, Joa Dupard, or Joy, Dupard. Gold, Noble Heart, instrumental classic music. Instrumental music contemporary, gold, Christopher Lawson Plummer. Music composition, gold, Rasan Johnson. Original essay, gold, Aja Hawkins. Poetry, written poetry, Amira Kanate. And if I'm doing your last name incorrectly, just shout it out. Play, Amira Kanate? Thank you, all right. Playwriting, Bethany Livers. Short story, gold, Leaf Samuel Dawson. Photography, gold, Ivy Mosley. Drawing, gold, Riley Brown. Painting, gold, Trinity Smith. Sculpture, gold, Abijah Wood Dawson, Abijah Wood Dawson. Abijah, that's right, the first line. Vocal music contemporary, gold, Bethany Livers. Vocal music classical, gold, Tari Arso. STEM architecture, gold, Trinity Smith. Chemistry, gold, Chloe Wilson. And national medalist, silver culinary arts, Leona Jackson. And bronze poetry performance, Amira Kanate. Can we give them a thunderous round of applause? And to our mentors very quickly, the National Advisory Board, Ivan Griffin, Casmi Barnes. Dramatics, that was for vocal music, co-chairs. Dramatics co-chairs, Jaina Roots. Israel McKinney Scott. Dance chair, Lula Elsie. STEM chair, Triva Brown, Ph.D. Humanities chair, Ernest Jones Esquire. Visual arts chair, Louise Johnson and Charles Johnson. Instrumental music chair, Keith Hart. Stephen Foster. Culinary and hospitality chair, Edgar Dookie Chase the fourth. Videoographer, Ernest Battle, Dr. Ernest Battle. And our mentors, Brad Richards, Richard, Janet Andrews, Jade Thieresis, Tia Bernard, Lisa Arundel, Josiah Price, Atisia Lewis, Phoebe Zito, Fernisa Cutno, David Pogorsky, Amina Baptiste, Michael Buchri. I think that everybody should get their name mentioned in every word. That's why I'm doing this. Shaleen Jones, Kifa Nosa Kiri, Elena Hodges, Sir Chance Powell, Sharon Martin, Lauren Gisclair, Kristy Lewis, Dana Tuie, Angelina Drago and Mariana Curry. Now, everyone, join me in a thunderous round of applause for our participants, the mentors and the advisory chairs. And as I mentioned, I have proclamations for all, so parents and young people. We're going to step out to the courtyard and, because we have some strong, strong cultural bearers here, and they're going to be on the agenda next. We're going to meet outside for a second. But I want to thank you all for being here today. And I want to thank the NAACP for supporting this program. The New Orleans branch, which just celebrated its 110th year, its 110th year continues to do those things that enhance the quality of life in our city for so many people. Thank you all for all that you do. It's been a great day.
Yeah, for those individuals who are here for the next item, the pictures will be taken outside, but we're going to start the other presentation as well. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
On page 30, item 39, we have resolution R-25422 by Councilmembers Morel, Moreno and King. A resolution stating that the police department recognized the importance of and utilize community engagement to better inform of how the department enforces policies and requirements impacting second-line parades in our residents of New Orleans.
Sorry, add Councilmember to that, please. I think at first it might be appropriate that OPD to come up. Do we need some help for y'all down there? Okay. We'll get you someone down there shortly. Just for those people in the audience, the, the plan, generally speaking, will be for NOPD to do their presentation and then to take public comment after that. And there will probably be some questions for NOPD that'll be given by the council in between the NOPD's presentation and public comment, but I have all of your cards. If you would like to speak during this, during this, after this presentation, if you'd like to provide public comment, please make sure to fill out a card, because I need your card so that I can recognize you for public comment. Thank you.
Are you ready for us?
Yeah, whenever you guys are ready, you start.
Okay. Alright, so afternoon, council, and to the community, I'm gonna give a brief overview of the issue at hand. We will answer any and all questions that you may have. I do want to begin by at least introducing who's at the table, because collectively, we will do this as a team with you. So to my right is Major Lejean Roberts. Actually, I will go ahead and have you each introduce yourself and then just a little bit of your years of service on the department. So, Major Roberts, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Major Lejean Roberts with the Field Operations Division with the New Orleans Police Department. I am presently over the 3rd, 4th, the 5th, the 7th district, as well as the Special Operations Division and Community Engagement Team. I'm a 27-year veteran of the New Orleans Police Department. I've worked many years with the second-line organizations, have good rapport with many of these organizations. Myself, Sergeant Nick Williams, we ran second lines just about 10 years within the city of New Orleans, all of the second-line organizations. So I'm very familiar with the culture, and we're here to come up with a peaceful resolution.
Captain Anthony Mieschew, I have 34 years on the job. I've spent most of my career in traffic and logistics. Currently, I'm over special event coordination, planning, as well as traffic division. I have myself spent many years dealing with the detailed portion of the culture, and at no, no point do we want to see any of this go away. We're here to just try to make a resolve and make sure that public safety is paramount, as we have been doing, and things have changed since January 1st.
Good evening, my name is Sergeant Nicholas Williams. I am a 20-year veteran of the New Orleans Police Department. I'm currently assigned to the Investigation Support Bureau homicide section. I'm one of the homicide section supervisors, and I also supervise the movement of all second lines on every Sunday in the city of New Orleans. I have been doing so for several years now.
Alright, thank you. So I want to begin by why are we here and how did we get here? And a commitment straight off the bat, I made a commitment to this city that culture would be respected and that we would honor the culture. The culture will be honored. The issue at hand has to do with the insurance requirement that is on the ordinances. And so let's look at that quickly, because the issue has to do with the concern over insurance. And when did our social clubs get placed on notice about the insurance? And that, that's how I understand the framing of the question. And if there needs to be some change to that, we're gonna answer every question that you have. Alright. So what we're talking about is that in the second lines now, there has been some change of more elements being added into the second line, and I think, as you have stated, there's been an expansion of the traditional second lines, now adding more of the, I'm gonna call them the party buses for sake of conversation. So with that, then there is a requirement that the city council passed many years ago associated...
Chief, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can I just ask a technical question? I'm sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor the point, or stall anything.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that we're probably gonna have to interrupt you throughout this.
That's okay.
Because there, because part of us having this conversation is having a mutually agreed-upon set of facts, and already you're kind of getting into a territory where I think they'll, will be disagreeing about the mutually agreed-upon set of facts, so I'll defer to Council Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, you, you said that the concern is, Chief, party buses, but, but, or how you're, how you're, 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 you're looking at CPNC under a party bus, but, but what you're really looking at is a trailer that is being pulled, is that correct?
Let me defer to the captain here, as well as, I'm gonna let you go ahead and speak for yourself, okay?
So what's been aroused is that we have a set standard of how we coordinate the efforts and the movements of all these second lines. It is a, it's not a sterile environment that we can participate in and put a parade route on. We're given those locations because it is a community engagement. We meet with them 45 days in advance to go over some of the concerns and issues. By 34.1.1, it indicates that they should have a second-line task force that brings issues and concerns to the, to the council. We haven't found that they've had developed a task force as of yet, and we're working in agreement to try to help do that with the cultural economy. As we stand now, it's been brought to our attention that some of these trailers are basically becoming, and potentially can be unsafe. Some of the things that happen are, these trailers have people hanging off the side of them, they're basically not harnessed in, they're open trailers. As we investigate to find out what measures we can do to make them safe, we've spoken to our grounds transportation bureau, we looked at ways that we can make them safe by, or the vendor's responsible for the insurance, since they're a commercial-for-hire vehicle. And then we looked at the ways that we can get them safe and maybe understand that it's not just the participants, but it's actually the public that are seeing it. So with that being said, they are trailers, they are commercially, commercially operated, and we're trying to make sure we hit the ground running with making sure we stop any potential problems.
So, so you're saying that the pulled trailers now would be under their four higher definitions under CPNC for party buses?
We're not sure how they fall, that's not our expertise as grounds transportation, but we are looking at that because they are hired vehicles that are inside of the parameters of the second line, so we're trying to find the most safety practices that we can find, and we're looking for help with, it's not like, NOPD is not a one-stop shop. This is an NOFD, this is EMS, this is all our public safety partners trying to come together to make these events as safe as possible.
And I'm totally hearing you, and safety is really important, but your PowerPoint says that you're looking, that these are the standards and requirements that you're looking at for these trailers, because you're putting them as party buses. And so that's where it gets tricky, whether you're applying this law correctly to what is a pulled trailer. But then I think the other piece too, if, if safety is such an issue, let's say that second-line organizations, that they don't use a vendor. Let's say they don't use a vendor, that somebody's just pulling a trailer. They're not a four-hire vehicle, so therefore, how can you apply the level of requirements that you're putting on, you know, with, with all this, if it's not a four-hire vehicle then?
I think you're exactly right, that that definition has to be determined, and that everybody understands it. So you want to respond to that?
Yes, so as we understand it, there's been transactions that my group has established and understood that the individuals paid to be afforded the opportunity to participate in the parade. With that being said, we would like any kind of confirmation on what the classification is for the public safety and what inspection responsibilities that these, not the organizations, but the members that are, own these trailers and how they operate on our public right-of-ways.
And so, and I, I agree with you that there needs to be clarity, but you, you all have been saying that there are ordinances that you all are following, and that's where I'm confused as to what laws you're actually applying, because the ones that I think you're applying, I don't think are applicable here. And, and I think that the bigger issue has to do with, not the, not the second lines, let's just take the second lines away, have to do with the, with the trailers and people being transported on trailers, not just during second lines, but anytime.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, okay, but that, that issue is now being applied to being now more costly and burdensome for second lines. Because even when you talk about the issue that happened on the Danzinger Bridge, that was a horrible accident, but I don't believe it happened during a second line.
Leave the ordinances are in, yes. I think you put the ordinances in.
Yeah, so...
I'm sorry, I'll, I'll let the, the presentation continue.
Well, I have questions too, so, I mean, I think...
Oh, I'm sorry, now the questions are all...
Other questions are on, I mean, I think it would be helpful, can you go to the next slide, Chief?
Yeah, I'm trying to get there, I apologize.
It's okay, it's probably one of the tabs at the top.
I kicked out to go into a live feed to get to the ordinances, and so I kicked us out, so I apologize.
Uh, I need, need somebody down there to reopen the PowerPoint.
Put me back into them.
Yeah, we'll have someone coming down. Because I, I have some questions, but I think the next slide would be helpful. There you go, we have somebody right now who's coming to help.
There it is. Okay, I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you go to the next slide after this one? Because I think, wait up, go right there, okay.
Right.
When, when my staff was briefed yesterday on kind of the rationale for doing this, I can tell you as someone who has unfortunately too much familiarity with CPNC law, the idea that we would treat these trailers as CPNC for hire vehicles is bizarre to me. It's frankly bizarre, because first off, the CPNC law, as you're citing it, was revised by Mayor Landrew when Uber came in, in order to make the taxi cabs more recent and more applicable. When you look at the language, this was never meant to apply to a trailer, like ever. This was meant to try, apply to vehicles and buses that are for the primary purpose of tran, of transporting people. And I think that the challenge that we're gonna have and you're gonna have is that there is no logical, I mean, there are some safety differences, but there is no physiological difference between a second-line trailer and a float. And the level of insurance and the level of, of permitting over a CPNC versus a float is night and day. It's absolutely different. And I do agree, as Councilmember Moreno said, there needs to be a conversation about safety, about harnesses, people can't dance on roofs, the tin roofs of, of trailers, but that is very different than making them have all of the requirements of a party bus. That is very, 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 very different. The level of commercial insurance required is astronomical, and I think that part of what is gonna be a challenge, and I say this as, as a councilmember who acknowledges that in a lot of ways, Lejean, NOPD has built a rapport with the community.
Right.
When you see someone say, have that rapport, and then not only have the notice issue, which we're gonna get into, but this kind of like draconian shift on how we're gonna define these trailers as party buses, it's jarring. It's jarring because while I think every member up here wants to make sure people are wearing harnesses, if they're on a trailer or they're safe, that's very different than saying, I'm gonna treat you the same as a hotard. I'm gonna treat you the same as a bus that does medical transport. I'm gonna treat you the same as, I mean, Ubers don't have CPNCs. The car you jump into with the app does not have a CPNC, a taxi does. So like, the onerous nature of CPNCs, and just to not add insult to injury, good luck getting a CPNC out-of-ground transportation. Because I have cab drivers who've been waiting to get their CPNC or their verification for two, three months, that's not people lining up with trailers during, during, uh, during second-line season. So I want you, and there's a lot of questions that are gonna come after you, but like, to have this and kind of drop this, this is a recipe for like, not only a train wreck, but like a train wreck with a plane crashing into it with an explosion. Alright, Mr. King?
Thank you, Council President. I spoke to a couple of the, a couple of members of different second-line clubs, and one thing they made clear that they wanted to let you all know is that they're for safety, they're for the harnesses and keeping people safe, but some of the trailers that we see people hanging out of, some of the, um, different type of behavior that we won't want to see is not actu, they're not actually officially a part of that second line. They may have jumped in the front, they may have jumped in the middle, or just tagged along in the end, and now those second-line clubs feel like they're being punished because you have people who, who are not associated with them at all, they're now jumping in and making them look bad. So how do you tell who is who and, and they're concerned that they're being punished because people who aren't a part of their crew, a part of their club, making them look bad?
We are aware of that. Actually, I'm gonna go ahead and go to Sergeant Williams, because they logistically manage this, and that's why we are aware of that, and we don't want anyone being punished. And I, so I'm gonna have him address that, but I do, I do want to come back, okay? I want to leave kind of a placeholder here by saying, the definition of four-hire vehicle does need to be clarified, absolutely needs to be clarified. My position as the chief is that the city council creates your ordinances. I'm good, very good, if the city council says to me, "Chief, we think that this ordinance, when it was designed, does not apply in this circumstance. You may not have even been on the council when it passed." I, I understand that. You just tell me what collectively the council defines as, because this is a threshold question, right? This is the threshold. So if you just kind of give me the direction, I work for you, you tell me what that means and how you want it applied, and that can clean up a whole lot. So then we can work with, through our relationships, to just, we collectively want safety, we're gonna do that, but I wanted to leave that as a placeholder, we can come back, and I, now I'm gonna go back to Sergeant Williams to... Williams to address this other issue that has now come up about the hijacking, the people who hijack our, our second lines. Go ahead, and explain the difficulty of trying to enforce that.
So council member, Councilman King, that is true. I do have problems on Sundays by some people hijacking the parade, and then there are some people within the club. I do know the people that's in the club, cause for the most part, on Sundays, they all are in the same uniform. So when I step into whatever business it is that they're getting dressed in, in their formation area, I'm meeting with the club presidents, and I'm seeing each group, you know, I know what float they're getting on, I know what group is coming out that's just gonna be dancing and walking in the street. So that is a problem, but sometimes it's both. This situation is never with the walkers, and 98% of the time is never with, um, the person that organizes the event. This is a strictly just public safety from a trolley and float standpoint. And I do address my concerns with all the presidents of the clubs. I have a good rapport with most of, most of them. I call them on the phone, I go meet with them before the parade begins, or even the week of their parade, and I do talk to them, whoever they put down as the person of contact of some of the New Orleans Police Department's concerns and safety issues for that week.
Councilman Thomas.
First of all, Sergeant Williams, uh, thank you for what you do, you know, from New Orleans, you know, most of the people and the culture, you know, you have relationships with, uh, most of the people who, who parade. But my issue is with chief, you keep using the word clarified. So if things are so unclear and unclarified, it would seem to me that it should have been clarified before we scarified the culture.
Right. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hurt this culture.
So, and, and, and let me tell you why I can say that. It's probably the only elected official to be king of two social and pleasure club, buck jumpers and Tremaine sidewalk steppers. And my mama used to second line before the parades, they had a stepping group, because it was making a statement about being locked out, left out. So she would hold her finger up, and they would put on a nice Sunday clothes, and because there were certain parts of Mardi Gras where you couldn't step and you couldn't walk. So they would walk in front of certain parades on purpose. So it, it's, it's more than just policy and procedure, and this is not new.
Right.
Some may remember, uh, when, when I got back home in the late eighties, early nineties, when a couple of council members, because they didn't understand the culture, they tried to restrict it to certain days and certain routes. Well, Johnny Jackson, Dorothy, Jim Singleton and them, they shot that, they shot that down. Right? And then, if those of you will remember the incident around Super Sunday with a police officer, and the Mardi Gras Indians up at, uh, L. Davis Playground, when an officer who wasn't from here, who was recruited to come here and thank him for wanting to serve our police force, but he went up to one of the tribes, and he said, "What y'all doing, walking around in Indian costume?" And that created a problem that had to be resolved, right? From meetings there at L. Davis, to the hearing we had here, where Chief Tudy Montana gave his life fighting for the culture. So for me, we shouldn't be here until we clarify what's hadn't been clarified. And then, I got, I think some council members are introducing a resolution calling, that I wasn't even aware of, but sending it to my committee to form a task force. Damn, ask me, and I'm chairman of the task force, and the son of the culture, and I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that, but it would seem like somebody should have talked to somebody who understood, who mama and daddy was in it, and, and understand that for the, those who want the, the city council to call a task force, the, the members of the, of the, of the task force that exists now, don't want politicians calling the task force, they want to name the task force. So I know that, I know that there's a section that's in the law, Code 3411, that says we're supposed to call a task force. But before, before you rush to clarifying what shouldn't clarify, and before we rush to resolutions naming what we ought to do, maybe there ought to be some meetings to kind of figure out who's on first, who's on second, and how we solve this stuff, right? Because, because, because let's have some intense, let's not let it be political. Everybody want to save the culture, I want to save the culture, I want to save the culture. Look, let's be intentional, let's be mindful, let's be deliberate in the steps, get in the room with the folk who love the culture and want to save the culture, with the people who is, excuse me, who are the culture, right? And work out how do we clarify what hadn't been clarified, how you want the task force to be set up, and what are the rules of governance? Because at the end of the day, if we keep taking this approach, the one that was taken in the nineties, the one that was taken because somebody from out of town didn't know that we honor our indigenous brothers in costumes, because they used to give us safe spaces back in the day with runaway slaves and folk who were trying to get away from, from, from southern, for Southern authorities, they didn't, he didn't know that. All he knew was that he saw some black folk in Indian costume, and he thought we were just perpetrating. Right? That wasn't, that was giving honor and homage to the struggle for freedom. So before we keep the walk by who gonna save the culture, who gonna get political points, and who gonna do this, let's let everybody get in the room, figure out the details, because if not, we're gonna, and I know my everybody, and I, then I'll, I don't know, I'm just gonna be quiet after this. And that, because it, it's gonna happen again, right? Because there are other people who are not part of the groups, who are not part of the culture, or whatever they have going on, on the sides of the parades, or on the sides of Super Sunday, you can't keep punishing the culture for what other people do, period.
Chief, before we get to you, I, I appreciate the council member mentioned one of the two resolutions. The other resolution says, "Don't do anything, and don't change anything until we have those meetings in those rooms." Because the reality is, is that the second resolution talks about, as Mr. Micho responded to, there has been a task force for years where no one's been on it. And so the goal is, one, the first resolution says, "Use the rules from the past season for the time being, because it has caused confusion, it has caused frankly terror amongst the people in the second line community, because you have the first second line on the 24th of August." So the goal is, don't change anything until we can have all the public meetings, all the private meetings, with all the stakeholders to have clarity. Cause the reality is that what's the most frustrating in this whole conversation is, if we had the time to have these meetings, I think you'd hear, when I speak to people in the second line community, there are safety measures that they're not allergic to. If someone's gonna ride on a trailer and they gotta have a rope so they don't fall off the trailer, they can live with that. Now, if you're saying they have to have the same insurance as a hotard bus, that's a problem. And those are things that we can resolve if we all communicate. But for the time being, it is, it's very similar to the whole problem we had during the beginning of last seat, Mardi Gras season, after January 1st. After January 1st, we had the non-Mardi Gras season parades that had heightened security. The problem we had there, and we ran to it there then, was there was regular Mardi Gras is paid for by taxpayers. Outside Mardi Gras is not. Those crews were handed bills that were three to four times higher than ever before. And the city had to step in and pay that to make sure they could roll. We have more time right now, I think that you have a willingness from people in the community to come to the table, but we can't change this. This is like, but trying to build a plane in midair. It's not gonna end well. So the first resolution deals with saying, hope, prop the brakes, we need to communicate, and we need to have everybody involved, NOPD, culture bearers, second lines, everyone affected, in the same room talking with the same agreed-upon set of facts. The agreed-upon set of facts are, we need to make sure that there are people who are on these, I call them floats, I wouldn't, I'm not gonna call them CPNCs, cause it hurts my head to think of them as cabs. People who are on these floats need to be safe in ways that are reasonable, ways that are not gonna make it completely impossible to afford to have second lines. Because if we do it the way that's envisioned in what was proposed, many second lines are simply not gonna roll. And that is not an acceptable outcome.
Gotcha.
So we're all on the same page.
Councilor Moreno, you had your button pressed?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm for that.
Okay.
You brought up a, a good point, just a, a follow-up. Obviously, there's a fairness aspect as to, chief, to make sure that, you know, one group of parades isn't treated, treated differently than another group of parades. And so, I, I'm just wondering, cause is, is this CPNC requirement going to now be applicable to, you know, the Christmas parade and the whatever else parade that's gonna be happening?
So as it pertains to Title 34, and what we're looking for is to make sure that all these vehicles and means of conveyance, motorized or inspected properly, have the proper weight, have the proper distribution, the electrical lines that go through it. Our expertise is limited as to what NOPD can do as it pertains to making sure that the vendor itself has the proper requirements to operate, but those parades are on closed streets in a secure route, which means no cars parked, no cars parked sideways where the trolley can get stuck and caught.
Wait, you're saying that they wouldn't have to have this requirement then? Only the second lines would?
No, I'm saying the second lines don't have that current requirement on the what we do on the, on any parade. So like Crew Abu has to have inspection.
No, I'm just talking just specifically about the CPNC requirement right now. Like, second lines would need their vendors to have this level of, of requirement. But the other parades, would they have to have this too?
They have a, they have a organizational insurance policy as well, a blanket over it, as well as each one of our.
But that's not the same, as, as, that's not the same. And I think that that's, that the CPNC is actually a higher level of insurance that's required.
Well, I think a CPNC is not only about what level of limited liability that the organization or the vendor itself should have, it's more or less, is it properly inspected? Is it up to code? Is the NOFD involved in inspecting these trailers that we're putting on the street like we do for any other parade? So Easter parade, uh,
Okay, so once again.
They're all inspected by NOPD.
Buddy, is, the Easter parade have to have a CPNC required license, everything? The vendor has to have all of that, just like the second lines would?
They're operated in a different capacity under Title 34. And we're not trying, they, just, just the organization themselves fall under a different code, right? And so we respect that, and we, and I, I think the message is getting misconstrued. We're asking for the assistance in the organizations and helping us make their events safe. In no way has the superintendent or any of the executive team wanted to eliminate a culture that we know far exceeds us being part of this job and will exceed past us. We want to make sure that it's safe. When my officers come and say, we.
I, I, and I am totally hearing you.
We're just about safety, man.
I know it's about safety, but if it's, if it's CPNC is the safe thing for second lines, why isn't CPNC the safe thing for the Easter parade?
Because we inspect the floats differently than we inspect the truck and trailer. The floats are, or.
But if somebody has a trailer in the, in the, in the Easter parade?
And I don't know of any events that we don't inspect all elements that are in those parades by NOFD and our safety and permits.
I think what we need to do is make sure that across the board, chief, that all parades are treated the same. You can't treat one group differently than another.
That's, that's my issue. I don't want selective enforcement.
Right.
That's why I want, you know, despite maybe some concern, that's why I need the city council to tell me your definitions and how you want it applied equally.
Applied equally.
And so, because if we think one element is a for hire vehicle, but then there's another element that's not a for hire, you know, then you have an, an application of a requirement for one element, but not the other element. And that is why it becomes very difficult to be enforcers when, when there are different standards. I want one standard, so there's not selective, everyone is treated the same, no matter where you live, what. I want one, one understanding. And very frankly, I do think that having the conversation in, in the city council is a good place to have the conversation.
Yeah.
I think it is, you asked us to come, you wanted the conversation here, we want to have the conversation. So to me, it's a different.
And I want to be clear, like, I step this priest, thank you, Council Vice President, this is the beginning of the conversation.
Yeah.
Because the reality is that I think part of what the council's gonna ask you today with our resolutions under suspension is, let's take a step back, let's begin the conversation on how we can do this together, both with the culture bearers, the community, and NOPD in the same room, having the conversation about what safety looks like in a way that makes these second lines safe, but does not make them cost prohibitive. Because cost prohibitive is not acceptable. And I mean, like I said, I have, unfortunately, I have more experience with CPNCs than probably anybody up here. It is miserable being a CPNC. It is, ask any taxi driver, any medical transport person, anyone that deals with a CPNC office, it is not something you want to introduce into people who are trying to do cultural celebrations and parades. So I think, why don't we continue with the presentation?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm at the end, frankly. I was just showing some examples.
Maybe what might be best, chief, unless you agree, is just to have some individuals come up and kind of give their, their input from the, from the public, and then we can hear what the public has to say, and then we can work together on a path forward that protects the culture. So first up, we have Perry Roboto? Rob, Roboto, all right, Roboto. All right, Mr. Perry.
Come on in, how y'all doing? Thank you all for being here today. Uh, Councilwoman Moreno, I loved that video you posted, uh, to the, to the, to the NOPD. Major, I've been knowing you since I had a food truck out there in '01 through '05. Then I sold drinks off the back of my pickup truck. Now I have trilies. I think the bar that you all are setting for us is, like they say, way overwhelming. Police chief, I know you're not from here, you really don't know our culture. These people work hard to be out there in those streets on Sundays. I respect what you're doing, Officer Nick, Officer William, I respect what y'all are doing, but come on, let's be reasonable. I've been doing this since I was a teenager. I had a food truck, I had the drink, uh, drinks off the back of my pickup truck, and now I have trilies. I'm only trying to make it fun, happy. These people love to see these trilies out here. Please, uh, Captain, don't, don't do us this. Don't set the bar where we can't reach it, and you know we can't reach it. Don't do us that. Don't do us that. We do, we deserve a fair shot. Yeah, we need, we need rules, we, we, and, and us as trolley owners, we gonna make sure that we have rules for the people who riding. Officer Nick, it won't be no more hanging off my trolley, I promise you that. Because whoever rent my trolley, they gonna go by my rules. I would appreciate if you meet with us as well, with these, with these parades that we in, so we can have a, a vision. We don't want to be tunnel vision, we're not invited to no meeting y'all have with the council, y'all have with the second line. The trolley owner's not invited to none of them. That's not fair to us, cause y'all ain't give.
Thank you, Ms. Roboto. All right, James Henry, James Henry, James Henry? There he's coming, all right, Mr. Henry. Just so everyone knows, you have two minutes. If the mic cuts off, it's cause the two minutes cuts off, it's automatic. Go ahead, Mr. Henry.
Well, good afternoon, council members. I do not know who needs to hear this, but no weapon farm but. But no weapon formed against me shall prosper. It is always okay for the Mardi Gras, Mardi Gras crews to do it, but when it comes to the second line, it comes a problem. Let's be real, this is our culture. You cannot take away something you never gave us. Now, the NOPD and city officials are making up rules for second line clubs without ever giving us a seat at the table. This is not governance, this is control. Let's be clear, requiring $5 million in insurance premium is a hidden agenda to eliminate us. It is blatantly disrespectful, discriminatory, and racist. For the record, the industry standard for Mardi Gras crews and truck floats carrying 25, 20 to 25 people is not $5 million in insurance, according to a Syrian associate, where I collected the data. The industry standard is $1 million per occurrence, $2 million dollar aggregate. Show us evidence where we need $5 million in insurance for comparable floats and trolleys. This type of behavior is just unfair, is targeted. It singles out second lines, it singles out our culture. We demand fairness, we demand a level playing field, and we, we are not going to be silenced. I yield back.
Horace Anderson, Horace Anderson. Horace Anderson? Alright, there you are, sir. Mr. Anderson.
So, good afternoon. I'm the spot boy of the Carril Wild West. We are the first black masked Indian tribe here. Uh, we speaking about safety, right? So here's the safety thing for me. As a community, in the last five years, New Orleans has had more fentanyl deaths than murders. But here we all talking about the culture. Standing in the same spot, what Tootie Montana died, talking about the culture. When you first come to the city, chief, I got in touch with, and it's just a request. I got in touch with one of your officers. Charlie, Charlie Tanner been in this culture just as long as me, over 40 something years. But here we got gentlemen sitting here, and there's no knock to y'all, but we got gentlemen who sitting here who never spun the dime, or spun any time parading in these streets. Charlie, just like me, he mad as any second line. He should be sitting here. I'mma offer you, just like I asked Charlie when you first come to the city, cause I'm part of the Backstreet Culture Museum. I'm part of the team. Ma'am, please come to the, come to our museum, so we can put you on something in this culture. Because right now, we should not be having this conversation. Thank you.
Kevin Devison, Kevin Devison.
Good evening, how y'all doing today? I'm here to represent Valley Asylum men. And we parade in two weeks, but we got everything that we need that y'all require. We got everything on, on full culture and everything too, whatever's going on. But we haven't heard from y'all, we waiting on y'all. Everything else is paid, but we never talked to y'all yet. So, we paraded two weeks, so we need to find out what's going on. We welcome respond to that.
Thank you. Raphael Parker, Raphael Parker.
Good evening. Glad y'all here today. How you doing overtime? Nobody calls me that but me. I'm coming to speak on the culture for what all of us do. We actually spend our own money on this. What's been entitled to a tremendous amount all our lives, something we do every year without even thinking about it. But it's the fact that it's a New Orleans cultural thing that don't, that we don't need not to ever end. With the safety fact of it, I think it's been safe over tremendous amount of years. You know, and, uh, and the hijacking part with the trolleys and all that. We have a, a league police and an Indian police. So everything within those two polices is what within the parade. So the hijacking part outside of that, that's what they call hijack. But we have a lead car and an Indian car. That's the parade route right there. But I'm speaking on everybody for this culture, that we actually spend our money like income tax every year on it, and it's bled within us, and I don't think it's going anywhere. And we need not to end this New Orleans cultural thing. Cause it's real New Orleans, and it's gonna stay real New Orleans. So I'm just speaking on behalf of everybody, and like Brother James said, we gonna fight to the end. Thank you.
Uh, this next name, I think the last name is Williams, it's 2851 Corondelet. I cannot read the first name. You can try. Well, she's coming up. You got doctor handwriting.
Not a doctor yet. I'm Laren Williams. I'm a researcher and an archivist. I've worked at cultural institutions, and I'm a cultural advocate. First of all, um, I appreciate the two council members. Let's see. Thomas and Morrell for grounding this conversation in what needs to happen before any of this other stuff. Number one, as somebody mentioned, there was a task force created for social aid and pleasure club members. More than 20 years in existence is here. You had no idea about this? I'm not from here, but I'm a researcher, so I do my homework. And I care about this culture, and I care about these people. We have, what? Under your function as a police force? Thank you, thank you. Um, your function as a police force under the New Orleans City Charter has nothing to do with creating fees that disproportionately penalize people who are carrying on a tradition that is centuries old. That is not part of your function? It should not be part of what you are trying to establish? At all. I don't understand why this is something you're going after, but it is not part of your function under the charter. Number two, there is an ordinance that financially supports Mardi Gras parades. There is no institution financially supporting culture bearers and the social aid and pleasure clubs. And there should be. They shouldn't have to come out of pocket. They should not have to come out of pocket for this. This is intangible cultural heritage. I got six seconds. This is intangible cultural heritage. I'm a full rights scholar. I researched this globally.
Thank you, Jeremy Stevenson. As I said previously, the mic automatically cuts off after two minutes. No one's cutting off the mic. It's two minutes. Uh, Jeremy Stevenson followed by Anthony Dowell.
Alright, how y'all doing today?
Good.
Alright, my name is Jeremy Stevenson. I'm the second chief. Second chief of the Monogram Hunters Mardi Gras Indian Tribe. AKA, the Black Masked Indians, alright? We not going nowhere. We not going nowhere. Big Chief Tootie died right here. Right here where I'm standing at, and I'm gonna say the same thing he said, no whombop. That mean we won't bow down. Alright, we are here until the day I'm dead, and the day everybody else in here, they representing this culture. And our kids, and our nieces and nephews is gonna carry on. We not going nowhere. Y'all can cut it out. Stop it. That's ridiculous. And I'm standing on that. Excuse me about my tone. I'm, these people know me. I'm passionate about this culture. I'mma die here in New Orleans, making y'all look good. Make us look good too.
Anthony Dowell, followed by Anthony Dowell. There he's coming. Alright, followed by Askia Bennett.
Good evening. How y'all doing? I'm Anthony Dowell. I'm listening to Officer Nick 20 years, this gentleman here 27 years, this gentleman here 30 years. I'm 64 years old. I paraded with nine times for almost 10 years. Before parade with nine times, I followed the culture all my life. As Lady Bugger with Ms. Linda sitting there, she could tell you, at 12 years old, I used to run down Washington Street. Whenever parade went on Sundays, I would run and jump over somebody's head, cause I loved it. The second line was all I ever knew on Sunday morning. I'mma go to church, and I'm on my way to the route. I'm on my way to the route. Super Sunday, I'm diving in the bayou, cause I'm feeling myself. I'm feeling the beat. I'm rocking with my people. And we out there having a good time. But the override there, what I'm saying is, after I couldn't second line no more, I broke my back, sat in the wheelchair for three years. Built me a trolley when I was able to walk again. The trolley gave me a reason to be a part of this. I was still there. I was still there. And that was the happiest day of my life, when I built my trolley and I was able to sit in the, in the road on Sunday morning, to know I was able to still be a part of the parade. But it's not a second line, it's a procession. We having a good time. They called me and told me we had to have a CPNC license, we had to have $5 million in insurance, we had to have a chastity frame. I went and bought one. Because NOPD told me I had to have that. But I wanted to continue to be a part of the culture. So I got a chastity frame sitting in my yard. Not knowing what I'mma do with it now. Because the trolley I had is heavier than a chastity frame. It's heavy. But I spent my money for it, because they said we had to have it, they gave us all kind of rules, and they told me, and they told me all the stuff about it. They told me couldn't do this.
Thank you. Askia, Askia, Askia Bennett? Askia, Askia Bennett? Askia? Askaya?
Askaya, askaya.
Okay, askaya.
Good afternoon, good afternoon. With this, we about to change trajectories here. French Quarter Fest. I'm Askaya Bennett of Olinu Style Fellas. That ordinance y'all held up, y'all held it up a little too quick. Because first, who ordered it, who allowed French Quarter Fest to be on April 19th?
There's no, there's no ordinance regarding French Quarter Fest. They filed for a permit.
So, why, I'mma go back later. July 11th, we were handed something that said, yeah, you have to change your date, you gotta pick. So who?
That's interesting.
I won't say that's, that's gonna be May, May 28th, May 29th, whatever week they gave us. French Quarter Fest need to take that. We going on April 19th. Like, who, so the whole thing about the trolleys and stuff like that, um, we support French Quarter Fest. We took, we, we was told we can't second line. So.
No, I'm, uh, to be, to be clear, to be clear, there is no ordinance for French Quarter Fest. There's no ordinance for anything else. So, if you could get to my office, who told you that?
What I was saying was, how she held it up, and it was saying about how y'all can't change things and just, y'all have to talk with us, we gotta have meetings.
Right.
Why, and this happened two times, cause it happened on single ladies, the, the second line before us. What, it was gonna be after us, which was French Quarter Fest last year, they wound up canceling them. They canceled due to the effect of French Quarter Fest being on the second line. They were afraid that the crowd, they wasn't gonna have a, a crowd.
I'm trying to understand your question.
It's gonna be a two-part segment. It's gonna be a two-part.
Your time's running out.
It's a two-part segment. It's, it's a two, they have, I have another card up there, so we could.
You, 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 well, you, you can't talk twice? You can't talk twice? Get, get to your question real quick.
All, Olinu Style Fellas, we have to pick another date. We gotta either go up or down.
Why would someone be told they can't parade on a certain day?
So the only reason that we have concerns about second lines that go on in major festivals, and I think the reason that the festival was moved on their date was due to the WWE cancellation. So they made adjustments with the French Quarter Fest and the WWE as I know it. So the only thing we ask is when we schedule the parades, that we have sufficient manpower to support all the events in the city. We may not have the manpower, so we ask for a rescheduled date to be able to support the culture, and ask them if they could assist us with making sure that we can cover that efficiently and effectively.
Was that explained to you at the time?
No, because.
Okay, I'm, I'm literally asking you why.
Why wasn't, French Quarter Fest that weekend, they told us go, I wanna say it's the 28th or the 29th. Was, that's the, that's the makeup date. It says May 29th or, and we did it on the grace and we took a June, that's not us. We, we not taking something in June, cause we have people who getting older, and the heat was too bad for us and the children. So they told us either June or May. Why can't French Quarter Fest go in June, in May or June? That's my question.
That is a very good point, and I think part of what we're doing today with appointing the task force that's been around for 20 years.
Right.
Having nothing happen on what's going on with their proposals. I think these are all good points that we need to have and incorporate into the law.
Cause French, uh, Jazz Fest and Mardi Gras, we understand what Mardi Gras is. We understand our break. This, if you don't know it, this is all for y'all to know. We only take a break, Mardi Gras.
Right.
And French Quarter Fest, I mean Jazz Fest, Jazz Fest. That's the only time we have where something may change or alter what the calendar says. The Super Bowl was a super, super exception. The sidewalk steppers didn't come out, cause it, it, they had the Super Bowl. It was, a lot of things happened. People got pushed up. We took April 6th. The week, the first week. We didn't, that, that's not normally what we do. We honored Pigeon Town. Pigeon Town comes out every Easter. That's their date. So you see how we work? We, we went, say Pigeon Town could take our date, which was that day on Easter, that's our date. We gave them that out of respect for what we do. We took the 6th. Now, the weather, the weather happens, so things wind up happening, so we understand that. But a club still is gonna come out, Jazz for French Quarter Fest. The only council due to French Quarter Fest being on their date.
I think that's something we're gonna have to address going forward. You're right.
So, before we, what, what do we do come April 19th?
Of this year?
Cause again, they, they gave me and said, they told me, y'all gotta pick. And, and I hate to, and I seen it in Nick's face, this is how he did it with his head now. Here, here you go. Here, here you go, I need to talk to, here, here you go. I, I, cause he know that, and I understand, I understood it. But when he said, and I handed, and I looked, and I'm in my head like, he know what we just went through. He knew how I was trying to take French Quarter Fest. Cause Olinu Style, we don't feel like French Quarter Fest bigger than us. Especially, especially coming out the six wall. Coming out of the six wall, coming out of the tree, we, we don't feel, they coming in the six wall before they going to French Quarter Fest.
And we gonna work on it, we gonna resolve it, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Alright. Uh, I got a one name here, it says Leon. Just Leon. No last name. Alright, after Leon, I got Ryan Hancock. Sorry. Rain Hancock. Alright, Leon.
Hey, Brother Oliver. Thank you for allowing me to speak in opposition to this institutional racist policy. Ooh, it take a racist to go and dig out something and try to use against the culture. And I'mma tell you, the lady Mama Dee used to come up here and say, and I'm talking to you, and I have no respect, cause you come up and they, they, they gave, they gave you their opinion on the, on the, on the matter, and you still go out here and try to make excuses. Don't keep coming up here and stuck on stupid. That's Mama Dee. Rest in peace, Mama Dee. We love that lady, and she was the culture of New Orleans. This the culture of New Orleans. Well, that's education on something. When you see me, if anyone in NOPD don't know what an Indian is, my great, great, my great, great grandmama come to New Orleans in 1889. They come out the Cherokee Nation. It were people brown skinned, reddish brown, carpet colored. It wasn't nothing you see today, so let's get it straight. But I'mma go, I'mma, let me stick on topic. Institutional racism is policies that, that affect those, but not those others. It's hidden in New Orleans, been in New Orleans. And that is deeply rooted within the policy departments, and it slips down to department heads. And y'all bring it out when y'all wanna try to get rid of us. It ain't happening, not on my watch. As a, and I'm speaking on my behalf. I'm speaking on my behalf. I'm a, I'm a member of NOFA, which Brother Nuna Man is, okay? I'm a member, and been members of other organizations. I'm the, I'm the Wild and the Black Fella Tribe. And I come supporting the second line groups. Y'all gotta twist it. But we ain't going nowhere. And I, and I, and I am a, was the former shepherd for the new Black Panther Party. So we know, I know what going on with NOPD. It remind me of what happened on that Denzinger Bridge, 20 plus some years ago. It remind me of what happened on that Denzinger Bridge 20 plus some years ago. When the brothers they were trying to get out of here and the family trying to get, y'all, NOPD chopped one of their arms off the people. Then we ain't gonna never forget that, but we try to be peaceful, some peaceful people. Don't get it twisted, okay? Never forget this face here, okay? Never forget it. Chief, I know you, you know, we, we didn't have conversation before.
Ryan Hancock. Ryan Hancock. After Ryan Hancock, I have Bruce Smith. Ryan Hancock, gone once, gone twice. I'm gonna have a staffer come out and talk to you because we're, we'll talk about it. All right, Bruce Smith. Bruce Smith. After Mr. Smith, Angel Torres.
Thank you. Just like to say, there's probably not, well, definitely is not another city in America where you would see this emphasis of culture, uh, take over a city council meeting. So let, just like to say, go NOLA and that is the essence of what we're talking about. Somewhere that was missed, I think, when all this began. I'm a filmmaker here in town. Uh, my job is to make art documentaries, uh, showing the best of NOLA and take them around the world. New Orleans, Nolans, all of it. Second line culture, let me say this, second line culture is the undeniable soundtrack of this city. Right? Whether spontaneous or scheduled, supported or not, second line culture is in every restaurant, every street corner. Its parade is not just what we are given certificates for. It's the parade of life in New Orleans. It's interesting to me that amidst this cultural emphasis today with the teenagers, we've already alluded to, and 20 years after Katrina, we're having this discussion. This city is built on its joyous resilience in the face of its struggles. That is what the Indians, second line, the brass bands, and the tone of this city are all about. If we are looking for ways to build barriers to that reality, we've missed who we are. And so I think the retooling of this needs to be, interestingly enough, not from a monetary, a certification, a permit, but from the optics of culture. New Orleans does not need to be on the national stage again for another city battle. We need to be there.
All right, I think I've read this name correctly now, it's Angel Jones, Angel Jones. Angel Jones. There she comes. After Ms. Jones, we have Ashana.
Good evening, my name is Angel Jones.
Thank you.
For someone who worked on the seventh floor in permits, safety and permits, who also worked with the permits for the second lines, I'm also a part of the second lines, but most of all, I'm a citizen. First of all, we're going to deal with facts. Five million dollars for vehicle transporting hazardous materials includes R O, defined by federal regulations. So how are we as a city are going to undermine that and make our own resolution and say, this is what it's supposed to be? I heard a lot of things, but chief, you don't work for them, you work for us. They work for us. Everybody talking about 20 years. Well, guess what? We're tired, we've been fighting for 20 years, since Katrina. We're fighting to still be heard. We're fighting to be significant. We're fighting for survival, our children. We're talking about safety. Let's talk about our streets that have potholes and cracks. So when we come down, we gonna break our ankle. Don't know how to pay for us to go to the hospital. If we're talking about safety, let's do that, let's talk. Let's not excite a riot, let's not excite panic. And let's not bring something to the forefront that hasn't even made it through the quarters yet. Listen, ask, talk, and then maybe we'll have a discussion about something. But again, what are we here for? We already know the facts. We know that without a root, you have no gumbo. This your root. What are we talking about? We talking about safety, but let's get the streets and stuff fixed. Let's talk. Stop trying.
Ashana Biggins. And after that, Chantel Allen.
So I thought you tried to pronounce my name, it's Ashana Biggar.
I'm sorry.
How you doing?
Good.
So I wanted to start this off, it's ironic that we're having this conversation around the 20th anniversary of Katrina, when our black businesses, our black teachers, our black houses have not come back. We haven't invested in the culture that makes the money that feeds not just New Orleans, but the whole state of Louisiana. In 2024, tourism, tourists spent 19.8 million dollars in the city of New Orleans. We got 10.4 billion. I'm gonna tell y'all something, y'all not taking the long game into account because people are not gonna fly from France and Japan to come to a Disney World version of New Orleans. After Hurricane Katrina, we went over to, all over the country. They have gumbo from New Orleanians in California where the weather is nice. And they have beaches. So if you want to keep your tourism coming, if you want to continue to eat off our culture, I suggest you pay for it. There is no reason under God's green earth that anybody, no culture bearer should pay one cent considering the state is eating off of their culture. They should be getting checks, not paying anything. Y'all not seeing the long game. All these new people coming here opening business, they gonna be closing soon. Because if you chase away your culture, you don't have anything, just like she just said. This is the root. People are coming here because they feel welcome, because they feel accepted, because they feel something special here. This is the something special. We should be having a conversation of how we actually pay our culture bearers, not how we take away from them. So let's have that conversation.
Chantel Allen and then Lisa Bourgeois. Chantel Allen. All right, Lisa Bourgeois.
Good afternoon, thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm, I'm here to, in protest, I'm, I'm, it's a good thing I'm not doing more. But I think this is egregious and terrible. I want to introduce a new concept, the new concept is the majority. Okay, the culture is the majority. They are not, we should not be talking about, um, you know, what are they doing? Um, how, how can, how can they pay more? I want you to, before you even come back here, I want you to bring me, how many of those insurance companies are gonna make money from this? What they're gonna make, how much they're gonna make? And how many are the indigenous that are gonna get paid because you are going to charge the indigenous, okay? I know how much money comes in here from tourism and I know the wage disparity where 85% of the managers that, for tourism are white, okay? No, we ain't having that. This is, we're gonna introduce a new concept, it's called the majority mindset. And that's where we feed the majority of the indigenous people.
I believe this is Brenda Collins. There you go. Well, your, your R looks like a B. Sorry, thank you.
So first of all, I would like to say thank you guys for considering safety. But the same way we consider things that happens here in the city of New Orleans, such as when we rezoned the area in English Turn, we created a trust housing fund, which is 17.5 million. How would we create in that, um, general funding, uh, opportunity to fund the culture? Safety is important, but how we get there, since it's yours overall objective, how do we fund it? The city has funds. We have opportunities. And since that is our focus, let's focus on not only providing the safety, but providing the resources so that the culture can live here. This is a city that is built upon the backs of us. Our uniqueness, our power and our purpose. It would be a disgrace to think that we should come up in here and find ways to navigate and dismantle the city of New Orleans. Not on my watch. We will not dismantle the culture, the gumbo. We've had too many shrimps taken out, too many crawfish taken out, and too many sausages taken out. It's time to put it back into the city of New Orleans. Consider us for safety, consider how to pay for it because we can. When you're creative, be creative now for the culture, not against it. Thank you.
Tamara Jackson Snowden? Tamara, sorry, Tamara Jackson Snowden? Tamara, I learned first time. Tamara, all right. And after her, we have Denise Collins.
Good afternoon. First, uh, council members, I want to thank you for taking up this cause. But in reading your resolution, I know you referenced that we were tabling this discussion. You are not enforcing the standards and the CPNC and IBM or whatever's going on with the insurance. I don't see that in this document.
There's one resolution we quickly filed last week to have the meeting. There are two being introduced under suspension, we'll get a copy to you.
Okay.
That, that one was just to have the meeting because we have to have something, in order for y'all to be here to prevent, to present testimony, we had to have something filed quickly to have it on the agenda. So that's, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, it's several components that's concerning to this culture and not just floats and trialies. It's the forced rescheduling of old and new style. Uh, it's the disingenuous, uh, position that a task force does not exist. They've been in existence since Hurricane Katrina. It's the disrespectful nature. All of us, and I know I do, and most of the members here do, respect you to the highest. If you call me, I answer. If you make a request, I try to oblige. I invited Chief Kirkpatrick to come out to VIP ladies and kids' parades so she can have a visual and get to experience the culture. But when you're behind closed doors and you make standards and positions and policies that don't include the voices of the people who stand here today, that's disingenuous. It's disrespectful, it's also displacement of our cultural preservation. When we stand and we parade, we represent our ancestral heritage. So several questions. What, we need clarity. Chief, you need clarity, we need clarity too. We need clarity about what parade elements are allowed. We need clarity about our schedule and waitlist that.
The, the mic auto cuts off at two minutes. We hear you, we hear what you're saying. And they, and they are directly in front of you hearing everything that you're saying. Uh, Denise Collins. Denise Collins. I could have that misspelled, it's 2713 Constitution. So if I've mispronounced your name, I can get you by the address. Okay. I'm just, I'm trying my best with the handwriting.
Y'all not doing good, y'all not, y'all not. Good evening. Yeah, I, I didn't forget I'm short, but long as I'm heard. I've been on the phone for months. Now, just talking about the second line because at one time I used to be afraid of the second line. Because all my cousins were bigger than me and they could go out and get lost in the crowd. I couldn't do that. I couldn't leave off Benefit Street without somebody knowing where I was. So the second line wasn't my thing. But it's been my culture, it's my family. From the time they were 11 and 12 to 90, 36 and 37, have cancer, smoking mojo on crack, have AIDS, have sicknesses. And this city, they looking like nothing ain't going on. All over Canal Street, you see those people laying all on Canal Street smelling and stinking and doing like that? Why y'all not trying to figure out who they are? I've been on the phone with Facebook people, trying to find out who the little 12-year-old little girl is in Detroit that's mixing. You know why? All these people out here on these streets and these people y'all opening these new schools for, that y'all closing our children's schools because y'all don't want them to come from our alumnis? And these schools, we don't know these children, they dark children, they black children, they white children, they mixed children, they all these children. Our children have shot records, birth certificates, social security, all this before they get in school. Do these children have this? Do they have this? I'm at, where, where Lady Moreno at? I was just getting ready to ask a question. All these people that's citizens and Republicans running for this office and that office, are they legal citizens of this country? I was getting ready to ask Elena because I know she's born in Mexico. I want to know if she's a legal citizen because she been here for decades pushing me around. I'm 58 years old, I'm older than her. But you know what I remember about her and a whole little group of people that walked through our community when the Mardi Gras was going on? And I sit on my grandma's porch on La Hart Street, they come through there just like she do, smiling. Get off that porch, nigger. So you see those smiles y'all do? No. I reported to you when you came in and brought the new four dogs, the four-legged police dog in. I don't feel safe, my.
Thank you. Ms. Jasmine? Ms. Jasmine? Other one? All right. Jasmine? Jasmine? She's not here, okay. Uh, Gentile Pedesglow? Gentile Pedesglow? Ms. Pedesglow? Ms. Pedesglow? Gentile Pedesglow?
My God, today, thank you. I'm very, very grateful for this, for this opportunity. I am not standing here today in my flesh, for me. I am standing here today as that little girl who used to come through these chambers. The tambourine was born. In a little field. The tambourine was heard. My sister Mahalia. We honor brother Malcolm. We honor brother Malcolm. If it wasn't for the struggle. I stand here today. And I represent the hunters. Drops mic.
Drop mic, baby.
I come here today.
Drop mic.
Asking that we can at least compromise versus conform. Because it seems as if, right? We wanna, we don't want to go this way. We don't want to go that way. As a former YA YA art student, I learned that yellow and blue makes green. Okay? If you didn't learn it in art school, you got it in the Ziploc bag campaign. Yellow and blue makes green. We may not want to go over here, right? To the yellow. We may not go over here to the blue. But let's meet somewhere in the middle and compromise to make this beautiful color of growth and green. I stand here today as an extension of the original person who originated the original Super Sunday downtown. I didn't understand in New England when we used to come at five and six years old in these very same chambers, but God was doing it then.
Thank you. Michael Burnside followed by Walter Fair.
My name is Michael Eric Burnside. I live at twenty two fifteen Felicity. It's, uh, the smallest legal house in New Orleans and I built it with my own hands. I learned something about white privilege. I was talking to a black lady one time about building my house. And about halfway through, she put her arm on my shoulder and said, wait, wait, wait. You put hammer to nail. Apparently, white people hire Mexicans to build houses. I came here when I was twenty two years old. I had spent four years in the United States Army. I was a virgin who hated myself because I was gay and I thought about killing myself. Because I was in an army where it was not yet okay to be gay and I had intelligence clearance. I was a risk. I came to this city hitchhiking. A black man in a pickup truck picked me up in Mobile and dropped me off here. He said, don't go and part and search the town because you're going to get your ass beat and maybe killed. I went to the wrong place to town and I met two gentlemen. One had a broken bottle and one had a knife. I lost my virginity here. This is a place where laws get broken. This is a place where slavery got broken. This is a place where the Indians housed runaway slaves in the swamps because it was against the law. This is a place where the law's always been broken. When I had gay sex, it was illegal. When black people married white people and came here to live together, it was illegal. This city has always been for those whom the rest of the world does not love. This city has always been for those who have no home. Whether you have lived here two hundred years or if you've lived here too, it's because you can't live anywhere else. This is the only place that will love you.
All right. Oh, thank you, Mr. Burnside. Walter Fair? Walter Fair?
Good afternoon, good afternoon. Um, I'm here representing the culture. First of all, I'm the president of the Original CTC Step Association Pleasure Club. I'm actually the youngest president of a main associated pleasure club in the city. I actually put together the protest that was at Gally Hall Tuesday. My issue here, I saw that y'all put up a picture on y'all photo screen up there of, uh, trial. That actually was my parade. So I'm standing here holding myself accountable. We will do better to make things safe. We will do better to compromise with NOPD. But I'm standing here, I'm standing here letting y'all know that, man, we been doing this a hundred and forty years. Like everybody say, we not going nowhere. And it's up to the elders to teach people like me, the youngsters that's coming in, how to do things properly. And we want to work with y'all to do things properly. But I don't think the fight is between us and NOPD. I don't think that's the fight. The fight is that we want y'all to know we're indigenous culture and we gonna be here. That's the fight. Like the fight is the, the, like the big chief said, two that stood here and died for this culture. That's the fight for us to keep implementing what this culture is, how important it is, and what it means to everybody in this room. So like I said, I could hold myself accountable in front of all of my peers and elders in this room to say that, yeah, we gonna do better. That was the only compromise for the protests we had the other day. That's the only issue we wanted to see. I think this culture done brought way more than five million dollars in revenue to the city of New Orleans.
Thank you. Uh, I'm sure we have online comment. Do we have any? We have two? Okay, we're going to read those after that. Madam Clerk, we'll take those two resolutions under suspension. Oh, you're back. You're Jasmine? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, hi, my name is Ms. Jasmine. I'm a local Black Lives Matter activist protester. I'm now a YouTuber. I started a YouTube channel called Ms. Jasmine the Auditor due to the trouble that I had with transit, public transit. So but I'm, I started one called Black Nationalist. Because of the CR one designation for Mardi Gras and the increased policing of outside, people outside the culture to represent, what, what is safe for blacks? National Security Agency? Hold on. Oh, National Security Agency for the United States was safer people, regular people? Then what's safe for the black culture and the black historic people? That's why I named the channel The Black NSA. Black national security. Black nationalist security. So it's this perspective that was mentioned earlier about officers coming to the scene and not knowing what's going on. I personally am just piggybacking on this issue due to the fact that on a daily basis, I experience officers who come up to me not knowing that I have a legal right to protest, have a legal right to be out here with a sign, have a legal right to be screaming and hollering. And they, they cannot process. Everything is disorderly conduct and everything is disturbance. And everything is misconstrued because they're not trained. And I'm asking if we could take this as a teaching moment to really get some cultural indoctrination at the academy about where these officers are coming into and, and, and what the history is. I think it would go a long way if you just train them in the, give them a New Orleans culture. Could I dare say give them a black culture class? But they need a New Orleans black culture class, okay? To know, okay, am I wrong? I'm not wrong. I deal with this, they're dealing with it on a weekly basis. I'm dealing with it on a daily basis. I'm tired of, I'm not trying to be funny. White officers, I haven't had no problem with black officers not knowing what I'm doing and what it's about because black officers are embedded and born in the black culture. I have white officers from places outside the parish, outside the state. What are you doing out screaming at this business? What are you doing? You need a permit. So I'm just asking for the teaching moment so that, that, that we can piggyback on for this issue with regard to public disorderly conduct.
Well, the, the chief is right there. She hears you. And I think, and also remember, I did send a letter, I believe, at your request? Okay. Okay, thank you, Ms. Jasmine. Uh, why don't we take motion twenty five forty, four thirty three up first? Because Councilwoman Thomas has an amendment.
We have motion M twenty five four forty three and we need to suspend, suspend the rules to receive it.
I'll move. Second, Councilmember Moreno, please vote your machines.
It's four thirty three.
All right. Uh, seven, go ahead.
Suspend the add.
Uh, I'll move suspend add. Wait, this machine reset again. I'll move, can I get a second? Second, Councilmember Green, please vote your machines. Six yeas, I'm missing seven yeas. All right, it's added.
We have motion M twenty five four thirty three by council members Morell, Moreno, King and Harris, requesting and directing council central staff to prepare, a draft ordinance codifying rules and regulations governing second line parades within the city of New Orleans consistent with applicable laws, current policies, subject to such changes as staff may recommend with, and with the requirements of any applicable consent judgment. And crafting a draft ordinance staff is further directed and requested to work with the Department of Law and if necessary, to secure any amendments to any applicable consent judgments necessary to officiate the foregoing. We have an amendment to motion M twenty five four thirty three by council member Thomas. An amendment to require that a representative of the existing New Orleans Social and Pleasure Club Task Force be added as a member of the Second Line and Mardi Gras Indian Cultural Preservation Task Force established by City Code thirty four dash one point one. On page two, at the end of the first paragraph, at the top of the page, insert the following. The membership shall also include representation from the New Orleans Social Aid and Pleasure Club Task Force in order to ensure ongoing participation of cultural stakeholders, regardless of changes in the chair of the Criminal Justice Committee, thereby preserving consistent cultural input in the task force deliberations and recommendations.
Uh, Mr. Chair, by, by formally, this amendment by formally incorporating the Social Aid and Pleasure Club Task Force alongside with representatives from parading organizations, the Police Department and the Office of Cultural Economy, we can safeguard both public safety and cultural integrity that defines our city. This will guarantee that community voices, historical traditions, and lived experiences, experiences of our cultural bears are always represented in the decisions that directly impact, no matter whatever the political changes. You're always at the table. That's the, that's the meat of my amendment.
I have, I have no objection. It's a great amendment, so, uh, anyone objection?
I move on the amendment. Second by Councilmember Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it, the amendment is passed.
We have the vote as amended.
All right.
Six yeas and no nays.
Seven yeas because someone's missed.
Oh, seven, thank you.
Mr. Green? All right. Uh, I will move on the resolution as amended. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thomas, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seven yeas, no nays, it's adopted. Second resolution, Madam Clerk.
Did we vote on the first one?
We just did.
No, the, uh...
We voted on it as amended just now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, now we have the second amendment, the one that deals with the pause. Yeah.
I do want to ask for clarity. Did we just vote on the motion amended?
We, we did just vote on the motion as amended. We already adopted Mr. Thomas's amendment.
Right, but doesn't four thirty four conflict with four thirty three?
No.
What do we, what do we just pass? Four thirty three?
We just passed four thirty three.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
What about the vote for four twenty?
We didn't do that one yet.
Okay. We have resolution R twenty five four thirty four by council members Morell, Moreno, King and Harris, requesting and urging the Police Department to pause any enforcement of certificate of public necessity and convenience requirements for second line parade elements and to issue second line permits in accordance with its practices in prior twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five second line season, except as may be necessary to implement homeland security related measures until such time as the issue can be vetted more fully by the council and by stakeholders in accordance with motion M twenty five four thirty three, including for compliance with requirements of applicable law and the consent judgment.
Thank you. So what that resolution does is it formally asks NOPD to not enforce the new resolution, the new, sorry, the new requirements, to use the requirements from the previous year until everybody gets in the same room, everybody has the conversation, and everybody talks about what the plan is going forward. That's what it does. I move to suspend the rules.
Yeah, we need to suspend the...
Second by Councilmember Moreno, I'll move to add to the agenda. Well, first...
That was suspended receipt. We need to suspend the add.
All right, suspend the add. We're not done yet. We're going as fast as we can. All right. Move to, all right, move to suspend the rules?
Wait.
There you go.
Okay, this is the vote on the suspension of the rules.
No, this thing's moved, this is the motion to add to the agenda, right?
All right, let's...
This one is to adopt. We added it already.
Okay, there you go.
This is to adopt.
Move to adopt, all right. Seven zero, it's adopted. All right, now we're done. Now you can clap. Thank you, everybody, for being here today. You are heard. Uh, Councilmember Harris moves that we go to first reads. Second by Councilmember Moreno, all in favor? Seven yeas, no nays, we're on first reads.
We will be withdrawing item thirty nine, resolution four twenty two.
...
We didn't hear the read.
I didn't hear it either.
No, the vote was all over the place, so I didn't know.
I didn't hear it either.
I didn't hear it.
Angela about to vote, go ahead.
She said go. No, we just got in it back.
Ordinance on first reading, ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one eighty-one by council member Jeruso, an ordinance to ratify and confirm the temporary waiver of certain fees, permit fees, and requirements within and around First Grace Methodist Church located at thirty-four oh one Canal Street.
Uh, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. We have a little bit more business to finish, so if you could just clear out of chambers or keep it down so we can get through the first reads, so everybody can hear. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance is on first reading. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one eighty-one by council member Jeruso, an ordinance to ratify and confirm the temporary waiver of certain fees, permit fees, and requirements within and around First Grace Methodist Church located at thirty-four oh one Canal Street, New Orleans, Louisiana, in conjunction with the NOLA Keys Fifth Annual Stop the Violence Youth Bike Ride and School Supply Giveaway Event on Saturday, August second, twenty-twenty-five, at four P M, to ratify and confirm the duration and boundaries of said waiver and to provide otherwise with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one eighty-two by council members Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, an ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one thirty-nine M C S as amended, entitled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the city of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate grant funds to hazard mitigation for residential home elevations in New Orleans, in Orleans Parish, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one eighty-three by council members Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, an ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one forty M C S as amended, entitled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the city of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate grant funds to hazard mitigation for residential home elevations in Orleans Parish, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one eighty-four by council members Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, an ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one thirty-nine M C S as amended, entitled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the city of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate funds to the Police Department to purchase operational expenses for the crime lab and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one eighty-five by council members Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, an ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one forty M C S as amended, entitled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the city of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate funds to the Police Department to purchase operational expenses for the crime lab, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one eighty-six by council members Morel and Jeruso, an ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one thirty-nine M C S as amended, entitled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the city of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate funds to the city council to cover Wisner litigation costs incurred by Barasa, Houston, Cooperman, Freeman, and Sarver L O C, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one eighty-five by council members Morel and Jeruso, an ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one forty M C S as amended, entitled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the year for the city of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate funds to the city council to cover Wisner litigation costs incurred by Baraso, Houston, Cooperman, Freeman, and Sarver L O C, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one eighty-eight by council member Jeruso, an ordinance to establish a conditional use to permit a neighborhood commercial establishment in an H U R D two historic urban two-family residential district on the entirety of square two thirty-four, part lot A, or lots X and Y in the seventh municipal district bounded by Hickory Street, Holly Grove Street, Green Street, and Monticello Avenue. The municipal addresses are nine thousand through nine thousand four Hickory Street, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto zoning docket number thirty-one twenty-five. Ordinance number thirty-five thousand one eighty-nine by council member Thomas, an ordinance to effect a zoning change from an H U M U historic urban neighborhood mixed-use district to an H U R D two historic urban two-family residential district on square three forty, lot D two, and portions of lots D three, D four, and D five. Portion of the proposed lot H three to be created under subdivision docket one fourteen twenty-four in the third municipal district bounded by Four Stall Street, Saint Claude Avenue, North Rampart Street, and Renee Street. The municipal addresses are ten thirty, Four Stall Street, and fifty twenty through fifty thirty Saint Claude Avenue, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto zoning docket number thirty-two twenty-five. Ordinance, ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one ninety by council member Green by request, an ordinance to amend and reordain section one seventy-three of the Code of the City of New Orleans to exempt structures granted of conditional use in an O S R district from the prohibitions therein, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one ninety-one by council member Thomas by request, an ordinance to authorize the mayor of the city of New Orleans to enter into amendment number one to a previously executed cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Orleans, New Orleans, and Hi-Fi L O C relative to the installation of a system of water level monitors to provide real-time data to the city to assist with flood mitigation efforts. Desire to modify the provisions of the C E A and extend the term thereof for an additional one year, five months, and twelve days is more fully set forth in the amendment number one form attached hereto as exhibit A and made a part hereof, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one ninety-two by council members Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, an ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one thirty-nine M C S as amended, entitled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the city of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate federal funds awarded by proclamation one eighty-three J B E twenty-twenty-two to cover the costs incurred for debris removal due to the severe storms and tornadoes event on December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one ninety-three by council members Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, an ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one forty M C S as amended, entitled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the city of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate federal funds awarded by proclamation one eighty-three J B E twenty-twenty-two to cover the costs incurred for debris removal due to the severe storms and tornadoes event on December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one ninety-four by council members Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, an ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty-one thirty-nine M C S as amended, entitled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the city of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate private grant funds to the Health Department for the National Collaborative Gun Violence Research Program, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one ninety-five by council members Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, an ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one forty M C S as amended, entitled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the city of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate private grant funds to the Health Department for the National Collaborative Gun Violence Research Program, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one ninety-six by council members Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, an ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one thirty-nine M C S as amended, entitled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the city of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate funds to the Department of Code Enforcement to support lot and graffiti abatement priorities in New Orleans Parish, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one ninety-seven by council members Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, an ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one forty M C S as amended, entitled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the city of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate funds to the Department of Code Enforcement to support lots and graffiti abatement, um, priorities in Orleans Parish, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one ninety-eight by council members Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, an ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one thirty-nine M C S as amended, entitled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of revenues for the city of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate F Y twenty-four Paul Corredell Grant Funds to the New Orleans Police Department for travel and supplies, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand one ninety-nine by council members Jeruso, Moreno, Green, and Thomas by request, an ordinance to amend ordinance number thirty thousand one forty M C S as amended, entitled, an ordinance providing an operating budget of expenditures for the year, for the city of New Orleans for the year twenty-twenty-five to appropriate fiscal year twenty-four Paul Corredell Grant Funds to the New Orleans Police Department for travel and supplies, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two hundred by council member Green by request, an ordinance to authorize the mayor of the city of New Orleans to enter into amendment number six to a previously executed cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of New Orleans and the University of New Orleans relative to the restoration of the city's infrastructure damage as a result of Hurricane Katrina, including roads, the storm water drainage system, water distribution lines, sanitary sewer collection lines, and Americans with Disabilities Act. Complying curb ramps, all in furtherance of the Joint Infrastructure Recovery Request Program to modify the provisions thereof as more fully set forth in the amendment number six form attached hereto as exhibit A, and made a part hereof, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two oh one by council member Thomas, an ordinance to amend section two dash eight and to ordain section one fourteen dash four of the Code of the City of New Orleans to require rest breaks for city employees and employees of city contractors to protect against the hazards of extreme heat, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two oh two by council member Green by request, an ordinance to approve and authorize the city of New Orleans by and through the New Orleans Aviation Board to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the United States Department of Transportation, Build America Bureau, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two oh three by council members Jeruso, Morel, Moreno, Harris, King, Green, and Thomas, an ordinance to amend and reordain ordinance number thirty thousand one forty-one M C S, entitled, an ordinance providing a capital budget for the year twenty-twenty-five to effect the following change to the twenty-twenty-five capital budget to deappropriate funds from the Chief Administrative Office, the Department of Property Management, the Department of Public Works, and the Office of Resilience and Sustainability to appropriate funds to the Chief Administrative Office to appropriate unencumbered bond fund to Louisiana State University and Agricultural and Mechanical College in the amount of five million dollars for capital expenditures consistent with L S U downtown plans, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two oh four by council members King and Moreno, an ordinance to amend section ten dash one oh one of the City Code to clarify which addresses must be provided in an application for a permit under chapter ten, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two oh five by council members King and Moreno, an ordinance to amend section ten dash one twenty-five of the City Code to require that certain information appear on an alcoholic beverage outlet permit, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two oh six by council members King and Moreno, an ordinance to ordain section ten dash one thirty-three of the City Code to require that the Department of Safety and Permits notify alcoholic beverage outlet permitees annually of the required permit renewal deadlines, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two oh seven by council member King, an ordinance directing the Department of Public Works to conduct a traffic study to evaluate the feasibility and impact of converting vehicular traffic to one-way southbound from fourteen hundred block to the eleven hundred block of Port Street, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. Ordinance calendar number thirty-five thousand two oh eight by council member King, an ordinance directing the Department of Public Works to conduct a traffic study to, um, to evaluate the feasibility and impact of converting vehicular traffic to one-way eastbound from the sixteen hundred block to the seventeen hundred block of Erie Street, and otherwise to provide with respect thereto. That concludes the ordinances on first reading.